Please join me.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Council President Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Henderson?
Here.
Counselor King?
Here.
Counselor Kuiper?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Brous?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you, Sylvia. All right, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? I move that we approve the agenda. My second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Consent agenda. A, approval of August 4th, 2015, City Council meeting minutes. B, approval of August 11th, 2015, City Council meeting minutes. D, Resolution 2015-072, appointing Rob Reddick to the Planning Commission. D, Resolution 2015-073, adopting protocol and an evaluation document containing criteria for the review and evaluation of the city manager's job performance and describing process for obtaining staff assessment of manager's performance. Do I have a motion to approve the consent? I move to approve consent agenda. My second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Under Presentations, we have an Eagle Scout recognition. I do not believe that he is here tonight, but I would like to recognize him anyway. Jackson Grubb, congratulations on your Eagle Scout. Should you choose to come back and tell us all about your project, we would sure love to hear it, but we congratulate you as a counsel, so thank you. And then, the Constitution Week proclamation. So, I will read the proclamation for Constitution Week, the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2015. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their prosperity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America. And whereas it is of the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to support, preserve, and defend it against all encroachment. And whereas the anniversary of the signing of the Constitution provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to realize the achievements of all the framers of the Constitution and the rights, privileges, and responsibilities it affords. And whereas the independence guarantees to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week as designated by proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with Public Law 915. Now, I, therefore, Kristanna Clark, on behalf of the Sherwood City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2015, as Constitution Week in the City of Sherwood, and urge all citizens to celebrate and to reflect during this week the many benefits of our federal Constitution and American leadership. In witness, I, Kristanna Clark, have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Sherwood to be fixed this first day of September 2015. Thank you. Dorothea White may or may not be in attendance. Is she here to make a comment on Constitution Week? Okay, all right. Not seeing her here. I will put this forward. Thank you very much. Citizen comments, Nancy Taylor. Good evening, Nancy. Green, you got it.
Green, okay. Nancy Taylor, Sherwood, Oregon, City Limits. You don't need my phone number. Okay, so, this is gonna be really, really quick. I was reading the Gazette this last week when it came, a little early. And I was reading my favorite, which is the police blotter. And I don't know why it's my favorite, it's just my favorite. I noticed that the address was missing this time, and I'm wondering if this last item had anything to do with it. Friday, July 27th, 24th. Police respond to a call of indecent exposure after a resident reports that a neighbor was filming pornographic videos in full view of the resident's teen children. Hmm. The video maker admitted to the police. He runs a pornographic adult website. He was warned to keep the shades pulled. Madam Mayor, I'm worried. There's something weird going on in Sherwood. I don't know if you had the opportunity to read this, but it's placed in between our priest, that, we don't know what he was doing with his camera, and of course, the famous Casey. So... I'm shocked. Here you want this extra police officer, and I think you yourself, Jennifer Kuiper, wanted to make sure that he was watching, to make sure there was no porno in Sherwood. Well, obviously, there is porno, and there's nothing anyone did about it. They sort of said, "Hey, shut your curtains." So, I'm truly concerned. If my neighbors are exposing themselves, so, all they get is, "Shut your curtains."
Okay, thank you. I actually have a question for the chief and maybe Tom on that. If it's a, if it's a, they're filming pornographic film to, for profit, is that something that can just, that they don't need a permit for, or have some code that they might have to follow?
Is it different if it's pornography, or if it's gardening?
Right, that it's, yeah, filming. I guess filming industry in general. Or naked gardening? There you go. Filming, filming in general, because that is filming for profit, for profit. Filming for profit. There you go. Because that would be a business that they're conducting.
Right. So, one could make the argument, if they're running a business out of their home, that they would need to have a business license. But I think that's as far as we could take it from a code perspective.
Okay.
We have, we have had issues with regard to film productions and getting permit to do those kinds of things, but those have always been in a public space. So, the issue here is, is my understanding, and I don't have the report in front of me, obviously, not prepared to address this, but the issue here is that somebody was in their private residence. And so, clearly, America allows folks to do what they want in their residence, and I think what it came down to was that there was some allowance of visibility, whether intended or not, that occurred, and it was addressed. And the indecent exposure law is really inaptly named, in my opinion, because it suggests that if you just expose yourself in some form of undress, you've violated the law, when in fact, that's not what the law says. So, the example would be the issues Portland has had with the naked bike ride and regulating that. The law regarding indecent exposure has elements that require intentionality and that the exposure is done for a, for a purpose for somebody, somebody else, without, without getting too graphic in my description. So, if it was done unintentionally...
Shock factor.
Well... Not the shock factor.
Okay.
But, I'll just leave it at that. But, if this was, if this occurred unintentionally, and it was not put on as a display, then it would not have violated the law. And that's, that's just off the top of my head, that's my understanding of what happened.
Okay.
It would be clearly illegal if somebody were to take any, inside their residence or inside any business, and, and display a live show for the sake of displaying. That's clearly illegal in Oregon and most states. And so, that certainly, I think, would be handled differently. But, my understanding of this off the top of my head is that's not what, what occurred here.
All right, thank you. I just wanted a little clarification. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay.
Just wanted a little clarification around the...
It's, it's a great question, and certainly, I think I probably had a very similar response as Nancy did when I read the, the log, or the briefing, or whatever, for lack of a better term, passed down about it, so...
All right, thank you for that. Tess Keys?
Hello, my name is Tess Keys. I live at 22923 Southwest Pine Street. I'm here tonight to represent the Y and give the city a little bit of update, what's going on there right now, some kind of exciting things, and I will try to do the best I can to inform you. Anderson Pool is starting the resurfacing of the swimming area now, right now, and will, the pool will reopen on the 14th. After much discussion and consideration, we are contracting with Rose Resource Group to do painting updates beginning in September, and because of board input, we were able to reduce that bill considerably and have them include locker room doors as well. So, that was kind of a perk. New signings should be in, including a reader board, the week of September 14th. New sessions begin September 14th with several new classes, including a morning Mighty Might karate class, sewing, art fundamentals, creative splash and play, and youth running club, and more. The YMCA of Columbia Willamette Golf Tournament is Monday, September 21st, at Pumpkin Ridge, and a great deal of funds are raised for Ys throughout our community that are dispersed evenly to help with the programs. And our YMCA has been selected to offer the Enhanced Fitness Program, which is a national evidence-based program through the Center for Disease Control, and the YMCA of the USA bringing arthritis relief to our community. It's a well-known fact that oftentimes arthritis can be a very debilitating disease, but exercise can really help alleviate some of those systems. So, our Y will get to be part of, of making that happen and participating in that. And the diabetes launch marketing starts September 14th, and that program will begin October 5th. Thank you.
I didn't have any additional... All right, thank you very much. We'll close the citizen comments. And we have a public hearing tonight. Sylvia, could you read our statement?
Mayor and counsel, this is just a standard legislative statement for items that are other than land use. The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to hear testimony on Ordinance 2015-006, amend Title IX of the Municipal Code relating to public peace, morals, and welfare by adding the new chapter 9.62 relating to graffiti. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to submit testimony on the above said item. The order of business the council will follow is to hear a staff report, receive any correspondence, receive public testimony, receive additional staff comments, and then questions from the council will follow. The hearing will then be closed, no further testimony will be received. Discussion by the council will follow. Any interested person may present testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. As this hearing will be recorded, and limit your testimony to four minutes.
Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, Chief Grove?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, you have before you, as explained, Ordinance 2015-006, which would amend Title IX of the Municipal Code relating to public peace, morals, and welfare, and we are looking to add a new chapter, 9.62, relating to graffiti. So, just a couple highlights from the staff report, because I know you have it. This has, actually, this conversation and topic has come up probably two to three times over the last several years, has been brought to me. A couple different city managers have asked, "Hey, when graffiti shows up," they ask, "Do we need to have something to do with this?" My answer has always been, "No, it's, it's really not an issue for us." I mean, it's just, it happens so infrequently. But lately, there has been an increase in the appearance of graffiti, and even more concerning to me, I think, is there's been some, some delays in getting it cleaned up. So, I think we are at the point now, I actually didn't bring this up this time, but I, once the topic came up, I, I think we are at the point now where we need to be proactive and get some code language that's very common in communities on the books, so that we have some better tools to deal with this. I would point out that one of the issues is that graffiti attracts graffiti. It's, research has shown that time and time again. It's just extremely common, and so, one of the most important things about dealing with graffiti is the fact that once it shows up, it needs to go away very quickly. And again, communities have experienced tremendous success in reducing graffiti by doing just that, making it very clear that it's not welcome, and it's not gonna last. If you have a message to put up in spray paint, it's not gonna get seen, because we're gonna cover over it immediately. So, so what this ordinance would do, in the new section, or new chapter, is it establishes code language that deals specifically with graffiti and the related aspects, including possession of graffiti tools and the requirements to report, clean up, and remove graffiti. Currently, without that language, we just deal, officers just deal with graffiti under the criminal mischief statutes, which make it a crime. And I think in most instances, that's not the effective way to deal with it. We don't have anything locally, number one. It takes it, potentially takes it out of our local hands to, to address it. And number two, you end up potentially arresting somebody for a misdemeanor. I think it's wholly more appropriate to deal with this as a local violation and allow the offender to have more options locally and be held accountable locally. We've talked about this with some of the other ordinances we've got on the books. So, that, I think that's one of the strong points of, of the language in, in moving forward with this. It's important to note that if approved by counsel tonight, the ordinance will be brought back for a second reading and vote in accordance with our, with our charter. And so, unless there's any questions, I'll just kind of stop at that point, and, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
I'm just curious how long it took to get the, how many days it took to get the graffiti off the one wall?
Yeah, I'm, a couple weeks, I think. Maybe longer. I apologize, I don't know. We, we have made two arrests on a couple different separate graffiti issues, one of which was the Old Town. But prior to that, there was another case, and there's actually, unfortunately, still some of that first case graffiti that is, that is still lingering that, that we need to address. And so, we gotta try to, I gotta work with Brad and other city staff to get the property owner and, and get them on that. It's, it's not a huge amount, but every time I drive by, it just calls me that it's still there, so... But anyway, yeah, to answer your question, Counsel, it was at least two weeks, if I remember right.
Thank you. Counsel.
So, I have a question. It's a violation to possess and implement, and that fee is not to exceed $100. It's a violation to not clean it up within four days, and that's $100, right?
Correct.
And then, it's a Class C violation for the actual act, and I don't see a monetary amount associated with that.
Yeah, so, we, we don't, we don't have, it's $250. So, trying to establish some consistency in, in our code language, we didn't put that in there. We just listed it as a Class C violation. And so, the fines associated with various violations are in different sections of the code, so... But it's 250, so the actual act of applying graffiti is this, carries this, the stiffest potential fine of 250.
Yeah, I'll jump in a little bit to answer that question. The, the way the code is structured is we have classed violations, Class A, Class B, Class C, and there's one location in the code where those are assigned a particular fine. So, if we need to change that over time, we just have to amend the one section. And then, we also have what are called unclassified violations. And for those, you, we specify a fine in that particular part of the code. So, that's why we have the $100 specified for those two violations.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any? Seeing no applications, I will close the public hearing and move it back to counsel.
So, Mayor, before you start deliberating, as I was just looking at this, I noticed on page 71 of your packet, under Section 9.62040, Subitem 2, I believe there's a typo there, it says, "In addition to any fine that may be imposed under Section 9.62030 or 9.62030," I think the first one should be 9.62020.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, could you give me that page?
Sure. Sure, it's page 71 of your packet.
62 dash 6020, thank you. Got it.
Mayor and counsel, in addition to that item there, I did bring to the attention to the mayor earlier today, there was another item, when it passes down, Counsel. A standard piece of language that's in our ordinances is an effective date, and when this ordinance was drafted, the staff accidentally omitted that effective date. So, when staff brings back this original ordinance, if the council so chooses to continue it to the next meeting, we will make this amendment to the ordinance and, and include that.
Okay, thank you, Sylvia. All right, counsel?
I have one quick question. Under the graffiti removal, it talks about hardship, if a business has a hardship and is struggling to get that taken care of. Who decides whether their hardship is legitimate enough? Is that the police force?
City manager.
City manager, okay. Perfect, thank you.
I have a question as well. That same section, but at number one, it says, "An owner of any property within the City of Sherwood shall report any graffiti applied to that property to the police department within 48 hours." What happens if that owner of the property is out of town on vacation, whatever the case might be, and not able to report that within 48 hours?
Then we would, upon learning of that, exercise what I would refer to as common sense discretion. Clearly, clearly the intent of that language is, "Oh, look, somebody graffitied my wall, oh, well." And if it happens to be in a location that isn't, you know, obviously, Old Town, everybody knew immediately, but if it happens to be in a location that, that folks don't know, and, and we don't learn of it, then, you know, we can't address it. And so, if they don't know of, know of it, then that's not the intent of that language.
So, could we change, in the parentheses, hours of the graffiti's appearance to knowledge of the graffiti?
Well, on page 72, it does say, under 9.62.060, subsection 4, if the owner is unable to remove, so forth and so on, the graffiti...
Sorry, my microphone's not on. Within the four-day period due to a hardship, he or she may apply to the manager for an extension in which to remove the graffiti. But that's different than the reporting.
Yes.
Oh. Counsel, section 8 is talking about the reporting piece.
Yeah, I'm signed back on 71. I am right here.
And for what it's worth, there's no, the, the reporting requirement is an aspirational requirement. The, the fine only comes into play if they don't remove the graffiti within four days of being notified by the city that they need to remove the graffiti.
Okay, all right. That, that makes a lot of sense.
There you go.
Sorry. I have a couple comments. Under the removal, if the city's gonna do the notification, would that include the police department? Or would it be code, generated by code, the notice?
So, the city manager orders that it be done, in terms of procedurally, who would actually provide that notice? I, I'd leave that up to you.
So, the one thing I would like to propose is that we change the four calendar days to four business days? Since I don't, I haven't heard a single one of us say a house that has graffiti. I mean, businesses are generally open Monday through Friday, with the exception, you know, of a few. So, I would propose we change that to four business days, not four calendar days. Because if the graffiti goes up Friday night...
Yeah.
Then that really only leaves a business two days. You know, somebody graffiti's an industrial park area, and we don't, you know... It's just a suggestion. And the other, oh, suggestion I had was declaring this ordinance an emergency. Not making it wait 30 days, but making it effective right away.
Oh. Where's that coming up? What page?
Normally, we would put it into the title.
Okay.
Declaring an emergency, which means it would be effective the day that we enact it, if it's passed.
I would say, in response to that comment, that they've already doubled the amount of time for removal of graffiti from notification by the city to the owner, and isn't the whole purpose being that we need it removed immediately? If it's not reported for a couple days, and then they have four business days, you're already looking at a week.
Well, and mine, one might say it might be easier for them to get rid of it when it, they're not open for business, because they need to be working. Maybe.
So, I would, I would keep it at four calendar days.
So, Mayor, there wasn't really a question there, but I'll just go ahead and provide some input. I think the language was drafted in such a way to deal with the graffiti specifically, and the whole point of, of getting the graffiti covered up. Again, it's impossible, despite Josh and I's best efforts, to come up with language that's gonna address every situation and, and every circumstance without the application of, again, common sense discretion. So, if a business owner doesn't discover graffiti for 24 hours after it shows up, and we haven't discovered it, because if we discover it before the business owner, then we will oftentimes let the business owner know that graffiti, that they have graffiti on their business. So, I think the, the issue is, in fact, let's do everything we can to make sure the graffiti goes away as quickly as it, as it possibly can. So, I can tell you, from experience, dealing with a very similar ordinance in a previous job, that, that it's, it's very effective, and, and there's ways, you know, it doesn't always fall in within the, the right timeframe, but it provides an avenue for folks to be notified, "Hey, you've got graffiti on your business." It's a city manager designate, it can be as simply, as simple as I operate on the city manager's authority, and, and the, and somebody lets somebody know, "Hey, you've got graffiti that shows up." It could be a vacation home, it could be a, you know, rental, it could be a business, and, and so, you know, we'll work with them to try to get it. And again, the point is not, clearly, I wanna, I wanna emphasize this. The point of this ordinance is, number one, to have a, a, a local tool to address offenders, first and foremost. You, you do graffiti in Sherwood, you're gonna go see our judge, and, and we're gonna hold you accountable locally and do what we can to try to get you to clean up. If not that graffiti, somebody else's mess, and, and pay back to the community. Number two is to establish language that says, "Hey, look, if this shows up, we've got to get it reported and, and cleaned up immediately, as fast as we possibly can." The intent of this is not to punish any business owner, is not to, to do anything, but rather to just proactively address an issue that we don't want to get any worse than... It's, it's clearly not out of hand now. We are nowhere near what a lot of communities are dealing with. Let's not even get there. Let's deal with this proactively. So, you know, it's, like I said, it's not to go after business owners, "Ah, this is day five, and you haven't reported it yet, here's your ticket." That's not, that's not what we're trying to accomplish, so...
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate your comments on that and your insight, because I, I think that graffiti tends to lead to more graffiti, and then more graffiti, and so, I tend to agree with Counsel President Robinson, that I think that getting the graffiti removed post haste is the most important thing, and not to be an onus on the business owner, but to, to be something that protects our environment in, in Sherwood, and I think that that's, that makes a lot of sense. So, Tom, did you have something to add?
Just, just two real quick things. On page 73, subsection 7, it says that the city manager may adopt rules and procedures to implement this chapter. That typically is language that we see, and the city manager typically does do that, and one of those things is to designate, you know, the authority of who's going to be doing what relative to the notification and, and other things. So, that's, that will be something, but it's not something you really wanna get into the weeds when you're putting together code language to, to do that. That's just something that will be implemented. The other thing that I'll mention is, there was a conversation, or a suggestion, that we put an emergency clause in here. One of the requirements of putting an emergency clause in is you have a definable reason for putting the emergency clause in, and that's something we could certainly look into between this meeting and next, if, if that would be possible. But if, if there isn't a justification, then you can't use the emergency clause, is my understanding, so...
I, I think that, I mean, I, I think that it's fine to just have a regular ordinance, and then if someone has some additional comments that they wanna bring forward about the ordinance, I don't, I don't feel that it's necessary on emergency at this point. I don't know how other counsel feels. I don't declare an emergency, I don't know that we have an emergency. We've had one graffiti sighting, and so, we are being proactive in making sure that we have an ordinance surrounding that, but I think that, and I appreciate the chief really jumping on this and, and getting after it, but I think that probably going through the public process would, would be fine. That's how I feel about it.
Well, regardless, we'll look into the, the likability of that could be done, so...
If we declare an emergency, we can, we still do the second reading and still have public comment next week. and still have public comment next week, or, sorry, in two weeks.
Well, I think we need to look into it and make sure that the emergency clause can be added. Because I know Josh earlier today mentioned to me that he, he's not sure that we can do that at the second meeting, so.
So I'm fine not doing it. How does the rest of council feel? You're fine with it?
Yes.
You're fine not doing it? How about you guys?
I'm mostly fine either way. I have a question about current graffiti. Is it grandfathered into the non-ordinance? Or would they be subject to now have four days to get it cleaned up?
I think the answer to both of those is no. So this would not apply ex post facto, I guess is the right term. I use some Latin. How about that? So no, this would just be moving ahead and...
So the current graffiti that's not cleaned up won't be affected by this anyway?
No, it won't. We'll, we'll just deal with that as we need to. But no, it won't be affected by this.
Then I'm fine not doing an emergency. Okay, did I have any other council comment?
I actually have one more comment, and that is to make consistent. Now that's been pointed out, on page 72, well, the section on removal refers to four calendar days, except for section C, which I propose be changed so that it's four calendar days instead of four business days. So I don't really think that there is any real difference in that section that would be a good excuse to make it business days.
Yeah, it looks like a mistake.
Under C, on 72, got it.
Oh, right.
Be consistent, I see that.
Looks like a mistake, probably.
Yeah, I think that's probably a scribbler's, is my, that would be my guess. Josh, would you consider that a scribbler's?
Yeah.
Okay.
That should be calendar days, that's a catch.
Okay, thank you.
Will this ordinance model come another news call?
Yes.
Yeah, you caught us.
That's okay. Caught you utilizing your resources.
We didn't want to reinvent the wheel, right.
There are a lot of communities in our area that have very similar ordinances. This one in particular is based mostly on, I believe it was Tuolton and the city of Salem. I pulled some from there as well. But for interest, actually, since the chief asked before, shortly before this meeting, I did a quick look to see what other communities in our area have similar ordinances. So Salem, Portland, Troutdale, Tigard, Wilsonville, Beaverton, Cornelius, Damascus, Forest Grove, Gladstone, and Wood Village, all the ones I found about a 15-minute search on Google.
And he mentioned Tuolton as well.
And Tuolton. What's that?
We'll just send the folks down to New Bern.
I didn't, I didn't actually search that far out. Maybe you were asking one too.
Well, I think that, you know, an ordinance against graffiti in our community serves our community well, it serves our citizens well. We don't want to de-beautify our community. We live in a beautiful community, and we want to keep it that way. So I'm definitely in support of the ordinance. Do I have any other council comment?
I do have one more question. So I do appreciate the proactivity of the ordinance. My concern is for the potential hardship on the business. So my question relates to Officer Perry and his volunteering of going out and taking care of the graffiti downtown. Do you know how long it took him and the approximate cost? I know the materials were donated by Home Depot, but do you have any of that information? Just, there's been at least one business owner that has shared their concern about this ordinance.
Yes, so I want to address both of those. First of all, just, I'll clarify kind of what happened. So Officer Perry was the arresting officer on the Old Town graffiti. And he was trying as much as he could to try to get those folks to be the ones that would clean that graffiti up. Unfortunately, he's dealing with the juvenile system, and it's important that we stay in lockstep and not try to apply justice separately. And then, you know, some bad things can happen that way. So in working in that process, he wasn't ever able to get to the point he wanted to get. Meanwhile, weeks passed, and quite frankly, he just grew sick and tired of seeing the graffiti up there. And so he took it upon himself to speak with at least one of the owners slash managers of the building. And he just decided, I'm just, when I come to work, I'm cleaning that graffiti up, I'm done with it. So he came to work, went to Home Depot to get some supplies on his own initiative, on duty. And that, that, rest of that story is history. They found out what was going on, donated it. He took it down there, cleaned it up, and it was done with. So that's kind of what happened, specific to that situation. Specific to the property owners, I have, I have spoken to one of our property owners and managers in Old Town, and I bounced this idea off of him and said, hey, what are your thoughts? And he said, chief, that's a no-brainer. He says, I own locations in Portland, and I just pay a service. And he said, when graffiti shows up, they find it. Rarely do I even know about it until the bill shows up. And they just send me a bill, it's cleaned up automatically, he says, because Portland requires it. He goes, I just don't mess with it. It's, I don't want it. He, his perspective was, I don't want it on my building at all. I want it cleaned up, and so it's worth it to me to do that. I will, I will also add that certainly very sensitive to that. And the position that I'm taking, that staff's taking, I put under the financial impacts is that I believe a responsible property owner is going to want to clean their graffiti up. I mean, it diminishes the look and appearance of their property. And so I don't feel like with this ordinance that we're putting any additional imposition on the property owner. All we're doing is encouraging them through this legislation to get it done quickly. That's it. And Josh has already addressed that the intent of the ordinance is not to find somebody if they don't get it done in four days, but rather the intent is to make sure they get it cleaned up. And we're establishing the language that we want it to be cleaned up in four days. So, again, sensitive to that, but it's my position that they're going to do it anyway. And it's really going to be an education piece, a lot of what we're accomplishing tonight. And that is just letting people know that if they don't clean it up, it becomes attractive and it becomes, it provides an opportunity to be duplicated and, like we've talked about. So hopefully that addresses those concerns.
Yeah, but do you have any idea what the costs were? Just ballpark figures?
Oh, he, I don't know. I would say, I have no idea, $30, $40 worth of supplies, maybe? Yeah, yeah, not...
Probably depends on the extent of the graffiti.
Sure, yeah, it depends on the surface. I mean, if you end up with graffiti on your cedar fence, you get a, you take your pressure washer out, if you've got one, and it's, and it's gone in a couple of minutes. You know, other surfaces are a little bit harder to clean, so it depends. But unless it's really extensive, like somebody gives you a mural, you know, it's pretty simple cleanup.
Thank you.
And it just keeps business owners from putting it on the back burner, really. And especially in Old Town, a lot of those buildings are multi-tenant. So I don't want people to think the tenants have to clean it up. It's actually the building owner who is leasing out all of that space. So you might have a tenant who is struggling with their business, but they're not the ones who will be responsible to clean the side of the building that they're leasing space in.
And I also like to make clear, since Chief Growth and Councilwoman Brown brought it up, that the city of Sherwood Police Department is not going to be cleaning up graffiti, nor was it authorized for that to be happening. So that's not a process that will be repeated, that it is the business owner's responsibility to do that in the future. So with that, I would like to move that the city council approve ordinance 2015-006, amending Title IX of the municipal code relating to...
Are we having a second reading?
Yes, we will.
You do have to vote at both, at both readings.
I'm sorry, I'm apologized. Okay. Now I gotta swerve.
No, it's okay. It's all right, it's totally all right. Okay, so I move that the city council approve ordinance 2015-006, amending Title IX of the municipal code relating to public peace, morals, and welfare by adding a new chapter, 9.62, relating to graffiti with the stated scribbler's errors. And place it on the next available city council meeting agenda for additional public comment and consideration.
My second.
All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, council. And we will see the revised with the section four in the red on our second hearing. Thank you. Okay, city manager report. Our assistant city manager will take over because Joe is on a well-deserved vacation. So, Tom, pass mayor.
He is, and he didn't give me anything specific to say to you, but I did want to point out that Joe did send Portland and Western a letter last week asking them to be informed or asking that they inform the city as to what they're going to be doing with the trestle. I noticed in the paper today, they said that over the next few weeks, decisions would be made. I have a feeling that's going to take a lot more time than a few weeks for them to make those decisions. But we certainly want to be a part of that process. And so we've asked them to, to not only keep us informed, but also to contact us and to be a part of that process as they figure out what they're going to be doing.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, council announcements. So we've had lots happening at the close of the summer on, well, I've been very busy as mayor too. On Wednesday, August 19th, I went to the West Side Economic Alliance Affordable Housing Tour. We toured several affordable housing facilities all over the west side. It was very interesting to see, you know, we saw not only brand-new, but also some remodeled, older buildings. And it was, it was a pretty interesting tour. So just seeing how the west side and how the city of Washington County, or, I'm sorry, the county of Washington County is working towards dealing with affordable housing in our county. On Saturday, August 22nd, I went to the Growler House for their live music. We're very lucky to have several establishments now having live music. I know 503 Uncorked has been having a lot of live music performances. The Growler House is starting to do that. So, you know, watch that leaderboard and look to see where you can go see some live music for free in the city of Sherwood, right here at all of our business establishments. On August, Wednesday, August 26th, was the last Music on the Green, but it was awesome. And the weather was great, and we had the Woody High Big Band again. And they were fantastic and gave another great performance. So thank you to all the musicians that played this year. They were amazing, each and every one. I enjoyed meeting the bands and introducing them and thanking them for coming in. And I had several of them who were from out of town that hadn't played before in Sherwood saying, wow, this is a beautiful facility. We love it here, this is awesome. So, including the Beatles band that accidentally dropped his wig down the, into the, into the little stream we've got going there. And they're lively groups, so they're a lot of fun, and I thank them for coming in and giving us great entertainment. On Friday, August 28th, I went to the Chamber Golf Tournament. And I was very lucky to be able to be in the foursome with Washington County Commissioner Roy Rogers and his lovely wife, Adrian, who were great at instructing me on how to play golf, because I'm not really a golfer, basketball player. And it was a lot of fun, great. And I also, so I rode with Mayor Denny Doyle of Beaverton, and we had a lot of fun. The Chamber put on a great tournament, so it was a lot. It was a very nice time, and it was a very mild day, which was, which was great after all these 90-degree days. On Saturday, August 29th, I went to a town hall with our federal Congresswoman Suzanne Bonamici and got to really listen to her talk about some of the issues that she's been tackling on the federal level for us. So that was a lot of fun. And then on Monday, yesterday, was the Sherwood School District kickoff, much to our children's chagrin, I think. But the, but the staff was super excited. Heather Cordy, our superintendent, gave a great presentation and everyone. And one of the things that they did, which I thought was great, was they had the new employees stand up. And she had them sort of uncomfortably stand for a while and say, hey, I want everyone who is on staff to take a look and see who our new staff members are. And I want you to welcome them in the halls and tell them your stories about being on the Sherwood School District staff. And it was great. It was a really fun, fun event, so a lot of fun. And the two, they were the, they were on council. Were they the two presidents? I was trying, or the vice president and the president? There were two of them, and that, that's what confused me. But they did a great, it was the student body president, and I believe it was the vice president. And they did a fantastic introduction for Heather Cordy. It was, it was really fantastic, and those two girls were fabulous. So they were great. So today, I got to join the Sherwood Police Department on their ORPAT fitness course. I even gave her a shot, and it was a lot of fun. And this is a fitness course that is voluntary, fitness training and testing for our staff and our, our current police officers, and also a recruiting testing tool. So it was, it was great. It was in the gym at the YMCA. And I thank you for indulging me in running me through the course. It was a lot of fun. So, Counselor King? Did you have anything? All right, Counselor Harris?
Good evening. Arts Education is launching at the Arts Center. They will be releasing their class lists on Friday, and you can start registering on Monday. Super exciting, they're going to have all kinds of classes that you can take, from photography to painting and beading and anything they can find an artist to come in and teach, they're going to offer. So that's pretty exciting for Sherwood. People will probably come from much further away than just Sherwood, which is great for us and great for our businesses downtown. Our arts walk, we've set it for the last three council meetings, I think, is Thursday, the 17th, from 6:00 to 9:00. Just reminding everybody, the classic film series will be starting over there. It's going to be the first Thursday of every month. There is a special one for Halloween, so that's kind of fun and exciting. Also, Family Matinee Series will be coming soon. All of this information is available on the website, so you can go check it out and get ready to sign up for some classes and get your art side moving. For the library, the, let's see. Oh, the library is going to be putting on a survey to see how people feel about our library and get some information about what you'd like to see changed or increased or decreased programs and things like that. That will be on the website as well as in paper form here at the library. So look for that. And estate planning is on September 9th at 6:00 PM, which is a free class, and it's a great thing to go to because estate planning is not cheap if you don't go to the free class. Having gone through it recently, lawyers are not cheap for that sort of deal. So I suggest going. And there's a backyard bird party coming up, and you get to make and take a birdhouse. Plus, there'll be somebody there to teach your kiddos about birds and... Did I say make a bird? I meant make a bird feeder.
You said birdhouse.
Did I say first?
You said birdhouse.
Thank you. And so that will be fun for the kids. I know my kids love bird feeders, even though we don't have any birds that come to our house, not even chickens. So, the library is asking also for anyone who has, does not have a library card to sign up. September's library card signup month. So there'll be a proclamation about that coming up to council, I believe, in the future in September. up to council, I believe, in the future in September. And this is a time when public libraries across the county spread the word about the value of library cards. One point six million books are available for you to rent across Washington County with your library card at any library. I just got a book from the Bethany Library, so it's a really great program if you don't have library cards. And when I was a kid, my family never went to the library. Nobody ever took me to the library. I knew there was a library, but I didn't understand why people went there. So, it's kind of a different world that we're living in with our libraries these days, where families are actually spending time together in the library, and my daughter is nine, she has her own library card. I don't think I got a library card till I was about thirty. So, I wasn't a big reader till then either, so there's that. But September is library card awareness month, so get out there, get your library cards, take your neighbors, take your kids, whoever you know that doesn't have one, get them a library card. And flyers for the, for the levy will be in utility bills soon when Sherwood opens their favorite bill, the utility bill from Sherwood. There will be a library levy flyer in there to educate the public about the levy. So, just wanted to let people know to expect that in their beloved utility Sherwood bill.
You done? All right, Counsel President Branson.
I have no report for the planning commission or the citizen advisory committee. We did not meet since our last get-together. I've been busy with football, as I mentioned last time, and I have to tell you that the amount of volunteers is just amazing for the city of Sherwood, that my, my son's team, which is one of, he has thirty kids on his team, he's a fourth grader, he has thirty kids on his team, and there are two other third-grade teams, so that's ninety kids at three, four level. And my son's team has five coaches, and they're all volunteers. And I just think what a wonderful community we have, that we have so many wonderful volunteers willing to put in all the effort for our young children. And the last thing I want to remind everyone is that school starts next week, and it's twenty miles an hour in the schools zones. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to let, tell council, thank you very much for voting not to include declaring an emergency on the ordinance. I know there's a government definition of declaring an emergency, but as a geologist, anything less than a six-point-oh major earthquake is not an emergency. So, thank you for that. Just couldn't get behind that one. Yeah, so, okay, announcements. On September twelfth, there is the National Public Lands Day at the Refuge, and the Ot Fallada Unit, if you show up at eight forty-five, so about nine o'clock to noon, you will be pulling a plant that is an invasive species called cocklesbir, and it's a very, it grows in wetland-type upland areas, the, the cusp between the two, I guess, and it's a, it's an invasive plant species, but in, in honor of National Public Lands Day, they're having folks come out there. And it's sponsored by REI, so you do get a free T-shirt, and you get a coupon, actually, that's good through the end of September for visiting any of the public lands, the federal public lands. So, believe it or not, there are a lot of public lands out in eastern Oregon, it's not too far away, there's a lot of places that you can go and use that card. So, if you've got time on September twelfth, check that out. There was no meeting yesterday for the Parks and Recreation Board, and that is because we are actually going next Monday to tour this segment one of the Cedar Creek Trail, which is very exciting. The plans are nearly complete for that. They won't start, well, the, the actual trail won't be completed until sometime in 2017, but the Parks and Rec Board, we're going to go out and tour that part of it, so that'll be pretty exciting. That's actually a five-million-dollar grant, by the way, that we received after a matching fund. I think the city put in maybe five hundred thousand for that, so that's pretty exciting. And then, as Counsel Harris mentioned, there is the art walk on September seventeenth, and they're looking for volunteers for folks to station themselves at certain places to encourage folks to move along and, and visit the businesses who are hosting any number of artists, so make sure to check that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Captain.
Counsel Branson?
I attended the Sherwood School Board meeting last Wednesday, and they went over their facility planning and assessment report, which is pretty fascinating. I think you can find that on the, the website, but from what I gathered from that presentation, there's a potential bond coming forward in their near future for consideration, but it is, it was a fascinating report, so if you have an opportunity, I highly encourage you to look at it. They also introduced some new staff, so the, the board was introduced to them. We have a new board president for the, it's Jessica Adamson, and then Eric Campbell is the new vice chair. It was pretty, pretty, a pretty easy meeting, just basically introducing staff and talking about the assessment. So, we have another meeting on the ninth of September. Although I'm not the liaison to the Main Street Board, I did, or the Main Street meeting, I did go to the meeting, and what's on the horizon for them is the Halloween activities. I believe that they've been talking about having a two-day festi, festival-type thing, but they've narrowed it down to one day, so that will be on Saturday, actually, on Halloween, and the, it'll culminate in an activity at the arts center, so that's coming along nicely. Mayor already talked about the golf tournament. Counselor Henderson and I were volunteers that day, and it was the biggest golf tournament yet, so it continues to grow and thrive. There were sixty-three participants this year. Also in the chamber world, the next meeting is on September eighth at seven fifteen at the Sherwood Police Department, and then, don't forget, the Onion Festival on October ninth. Also, for those wine lovers out there, there is a new wine map that is now complete, and you can find that at the chamber office, so you can go on your wine tour, and there's also some local eateries on there as well. And that's all I have.
Counsel Harrison?
We are looking for volunteers for Onion Festival, by the way. On the twentieth, I was in attendance at the police advisory board, and we had a work session with them tonight, and I think everybody but two members were there, and so we had a good conversation with the council and appreciate the work that the police advisory board is doing. They're still continuing to, as a new board, they're still continuing to gather information and get educated themselves about Sherwood and law enforcement and, and hopefully what's coming in the future. I also attended the steering committee at the senior center, and exciting news, I have three new members, including a new chair, which is Tammy Veale, for the steering committee, so we have some new members, which is exciting because it was time for some new people to step up to the plate, and looking forward to continuing to do programming and fundraising at the senior center. And I guess that's it. I will just tag off of Counsel Branson's comments about the school district and a pending bond. You know, we, we live in a wonderful community, we have a wonderful school district, but we've had a lot of growth, I think, anticipated much faster when they passed the original bond in two thousand eight. I have an incoming freshman at the high school where there are a hundred and sixty students over capacity, and at SMS, their average class size is thirty-three. So, in some classes, there will be forty students, and that's obviously a district that's expanding beyond its means with that kind of class size. So, I would be interested in seeing the facilities report and sort of understanding what the school district's plan is, I guess, so. And I don't, and I don't know the class sizes at the other middle school, but I would assume that they're at or near capacity as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A second?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.